Okay, good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, so I'm going to call two nights Temecula City Council meeting to order. We'll go ahead and start off with the invocation, so could we have Reverend Carol Horton Howe come to the podium? And then for the flag salute, I'm going to ask Councilmember Calphus to lead us in the flag.
Good evening. I bring you greetings from the people of St. Thomas of Canterbury Episcopal Church. Each Sunday morning, we keep the city council members in our prayers, and it's an honor for me to be here. Let us pray. Gracious, loving, almighty God, we thank you for our city. Thank you for our elected officials and for this community. We ask you to be present this evening with those who have accepted the call to serve on the city council of Temecula, Mayor Zach, and councilmembers James, Brendan, Curtis, and Jessica, and to be present with them in real and tangible ways as they discern the path forward on behalf of all who call Temecula home. As they go about their work, keep them always mindful that they are not only leaders but also servants, charged with the care and common good of all. Lord, who can be trusted with power and who may act in your place? Those with a passion for justice, who speak the truth from their hearts, who have let go of selfish interests and grown beyond their own lives, to see the wretched as their family and the poor as their flesh and blood. They alone are impartial and worthy of the people's trust. Their compassion lights up the whole earth and their kindness endures forever. This vision for our leaders, we ask you, God, to inspire in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy. Amen.
Amen. Everyone can face the flag, right hand over your hearts, and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Calphus.
Here.
Mayor Schwank.
I'm here.
And Mayor Potem Stewart is absent.
Hey, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move into the presentation portion of the agenda. So first up, we have General Manager Rob Grantham of Rancho California Water District regarding water supply and drought update. Welcome.
Good evening. It's really an honor to be here. And to start, congratulations again on the dedication this morning. Very well done, and thank you for everything you're doing in terms of our energy management in the community. And it's nice to be in front of a celebrity this evening. So I wanted to, and thank you always for the invitation to come and talk about water supply. I know it's not on, you know, the forefront of everyone's mind, but we've had a, you know, kind of a, not a historic, but a different water year this past year, and it's really been a good one. And so I wanted to come and give a quick update to the council and just some of the processes and projects that we're working on. So I'll start with just the water conditions in California and then also talk about our activities. So what we're statewide, the water conditions are much different than just six months ago. It's really been a blessing in terms of the water supply that we have. We still have the challenge of capturing that water, as we've talked about in the past. California really doesn't have a significant storage, and so one of our major projects is to develop that local storage so we can continue to get through the cyclical nature of the water supply. But what that does mean is we're able to capture water from Northern California, import it, and then capture here locally. And so as a district, we are buying supplemental water this year to store for future years. It's not only a protection for future droughts, but it's also cost savings. The more we can buy today, just we're able to save money in the future. But the other thing to note is really about where our water comes from. And so it's raining outside, yet we're really not out of the, what we call, water challenges. We import water from Northern California. We import water from the Colorado River. You know, I was just very grateful to be invited to the U.S. Bureau of Reclamation last week. So they had 40 of their leaders in at the Hoover Dam. I was the only outsider, and it was just quite fun to, it's this historic time to be there in the mix. Water on the Colorado River, which is a major source of our supply, is still in challenged. And so this year has been phenomenal, yet we still have to be protective in terms of our water supply. But as we've seen, just really challenged, there are changes from 2017 to 23. You know, if we were going to go through another year of this drought period, we really would have been asking the community to conserve to a much larger degree. And that's really the message. And I come, and I think I say it every time I come, is thank you. Thank you to the community for what we do. We have a lot of visitors come to us in Temecula. It's not just because Temecula is a beautiful place, but it's, we have folks from the USBR, we have folks from the state coming down. And the thing that they're all impressed by is how this community has been able to conserve and do and be efficient with water, was still maintaining the aesthetic of the community. And that's something that's a hallmark of the city. And how do you do that? And really, the message is about good partnerships. It's about not wagging the finger and saying, "You must," it's saying, "Hey, please come along." And so that community engagement is something that we're really proud of. And so that's really, I know that's a partnership, and I'm proud of that partnership. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that. What we're doing in advocacy, and that's again, partnership with the city, and then what we're doing for resource planning. So, you know, over the past several years, past 15 years, on a per-account basis, this community has reduced its water demands by half. That's incredible. I mean, that is a benchmark. And we, you know, again, we've done it through good partnerships. We launched what we refer to as Temecula, Marietta, and Bloom. And so one of the things we work with the city staff is there is an aesthetic to the community, there's an aesthetic to the city, and we want to maintain that. Yet we can change out some turf, et cetera, that fits. And so we have a concierge service. And so we, like, you know, we've been advertising, want folks to take us up on it, to come visit our website, to come, you know, look at what might work with our community. And so we have those systems. But again, saying thank you, and that's really an important thing, to say thank you to the community for doing a great job helping us get through this process. From an advocacy standpoint, and I have had this conversation multiple times with the council, is we really are working with Sacramento, and again, the federal government, to try to advocate for good policy. One of the, I guess, the hallmarks is Caballero, Senator Caballero out of Central Valley, SP 366. It's trying to solve that challenge we have on a statewide basis of lack of water storage, lack of water supply. We really need to change water policy in the state, and this would create significant water storage programs that will help us get through these cyclical natures, because they're going to be there, we know that. And so it's really about addressing the water policy. The other, and just the other side of the coin, and it's something we've talked about with staff, is there is significant legislation to continue to create conservation. Conservation in general or efficiency is positive. Forced conservation can be a challenge. And so one of the considerations, non-functional turf. So it's turf that you don't walk on. It's ornamental. There's legislation that would require municipalities, the city, the district, commercial customers, even HOAs, to pull out their ornamental grass within the next five years. And so that's a real cost that's coming to the city and our community, and something that we're trying to negotiate to make it reasonable, not just a significant cost that's the community's not able to bear. We are also, one last thing, is working with the, actually Garcia, Edward Garcia, 1594. So there's a push to have electrification trucks in California, which is a positive. But we also need to be able to respond to wildfires and being able to emergency efforts. And so we're working with that legislation so that we do have that ability to protect the city. So finally, the last thing I was going to touch on, and if Councilmember Stewart were here, he would ask me about it, is what are some of the projects? So we're continuing, again, to expand on our groundwater banking program. The more we can store water in the basin, it's a huge asset. It really protects the community from cyclical changes in water demands. We are continuing to make progress on our dam. It was with great pride, and great pride meaning, you know, bragging on my colleagues is really what I'm doing, is environmental impact, the report. We only had one comment, and the comment was, "We have no comments." And for a project of this size, that is quite a feat. And so we appreciate the city's participation, and that's something we're very proud of. And so we'll be replacing the dam at Vale Lake, and so it should go to construction beginning of '24, summer of '24. And then, in concert with the city's efforts on efficiencies, one of the things that we are very proud of is we continue to look for opportunities to reduce our power demands. And so we, I think we, I'll hold it, but I think we've received a grant to put in hydropower, and so capturing free energy effectively. But overall, our energy programs have saved us about $3 million a year in energy costs. That goes directly to, you know, reducing costs to ratepayers. And so, but it's also about doing the right thing, protecting the community. So it's another thing that we're very pleased to share. And with that, I do appreciate the time, as always. Happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Rob. Any questions from council? No? Thank you again, and I always just appreciate the work that you do in the community. And then on the advocacy side, always seeing you out, always in Sacramento and in DC as well. I'm always working for the residents here, so much appreciated.
Likewise, and thank you, thank you for the partnership.
Absolutely. Take care. Thank you. All right, our second presentation by consultants Ryan Allen and Dana Link Herrera of DUDEC regarding Temecula's Urban Forest Management Plan. Welcome. Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. My name's Stacy Fox. I'm the Park and Landscape Superintendent, City of Temecula. And this evening, we are very excited to present to you this evening the city's Urban Forest Management Plan. First, a little background. The city applied for a grant funded by Prop 68 in 2019. This is an urban and community forestry, for urban and community forestry projects, and the city was awarded $323,930 to prepare a Temecula Urban Forest Management Plan and inventory update. This grant also included planting 300 trees, development of a tree inventory, canopy assessment, and a management plan, and ordinance and policy updates. Out of the $323,930 grant award, the city had a matching portion of $115,415, which includes in-kind services such as staff time, supplies, educational outreach, and materials for a total grant funding of $439,345. On August 25th of 2020, the city manager, under the authorities delegated by the city council, approved DUDEC as the city consultant to help develop the city's Urban Forest Management Plan for a contract amount of $320,700. So why does the city need a UFMP? Temecula's Urban Forest Management Plan, UFMP, it outlines the city goals, objectives, in managing a healthy urban forest. The UFMP is a comprehensive and detailed plan to better ensure resources are in place to support the sustainability of the city's urban forest. The plan also outlines the vision of Temecula trees for the next 20 to 40 years. The plan formalizes the city's commitment to its urban forest through the development of long-term plan, establishing BMPs, the Best Management Practices, and sustainable development. A sustainable urban forest is healthier, more resistant to pests and diseases, climate fluctuations, and is more cost-effective to manage. The UFMP was developed through systematic review of city policies, current funding, staffing, maintenance levels, and the review of extent and composition of the existing resources, which are the trees, internal, external stakeholder reviews and objectives, and community values and input. So with that, I'll now turn over the presentation to Ryan Allen and Dana Link Herrera with DUDEC.
Thanks, Stacy. I'm Ryan Allen. My colleague Dana Link Herrera is over there. Pleasure to be here tonight and talk about the work that we did with Stacy and the city over the last couple of years. It really was a pleasure working with Stacy. He's a fantastic arborist and cares a lot about trees in the city, and it was great. Really enjoyed this project very much. One aspect of our Urban Forest Management Plan was putting together a specific street tree master plan, where we looked at literally every street within the city, used different criteria to determine where trees are viable planting locations, like you see here, parkway size, planting space in the ground, in the air, if there's existing overhead wires. We looked at tree species selection and what would be appropriate for those locations, determining trees that are going to be appropriate for the future. We've had a lot of great water this last year, but that hasn't been the norm. So trees that can be drought tolerant and acclimated to warmer temperatures, and trying to incorporate regionally native tree species as much as possible for habitat and biodiversity issues as well. Stacy touched on some of this, but a lot goes into developing an Urban Forest Management Plan. Receiving the funding was the first key part of that project. We looked at the tree inventory to look at sustainability criteria, to make sure that there's enough diversity within the species, within the age, that the health conditions of the trees are overall good, and identifying if there are trees that aren't as healthy. We looked at the canopy cover, which is when you take an aerial image and look down how much of the city is covered by the leaves and branches of the trees, to see where we stand with that, to make recommendations of where we need trees, how many trees will it take to get to a more sustainable environment. We looked at all the policies, ordinances, and plans that relate to trees, including things like the Quality of Life Master Plan, so we can have alignment across city documents. We did a lot of community engagement, and we have another slide relating to that later that I'll get into more detail on that. Took all that information, put together our draft recommendations and our technical assessment. Stacy and multiple city staff members and departments had the opportunity to review, provide comment, edit, and make appropriate changes, had a public review period, and have now finalized pending approval from council. So just some really big-picture items of key findings. Within the inventory that was conducted, there is a little over 30,000 trees identified that are directly managed by the city. And 87% of those trees are classified as immature or young, which means they have a trunk that are, that's smaller than 18 inches in diameter, which makes sense. Temecula is a newer city. The planting efforts have relatively taken place over the last 20 years, so it's not expected to have a lot of large mature trees yet that weren't already existing within the city's landscape. Canopy cover is approximately 11% currently, which is low for a city like Temecula that, Temecula that was developed in an area that didn't have trees yet, and it's developing its urban forest. One thing that you have going for you, that it has been well-planned for trees, and that's been incorporated into the developments and HOAs and things like that. So as new trees are planted and as the existing trees grow, we're expecting that 20% is a relatively good first goal, a first step to achieve over the next 30 to 40 years. And one thing about this project is that it's a living document. Goals need to be reassessed and looked at and changed over time as conditions change. A very important part of the canopy cover analysis is that 10% is only publicly managed trees. So you, as a city, only really control about 10% of that total canopy cover. 90% is on private property. So your homeowners, your businesses, people in commercial corridors play a huge role in trees and growing canopy cover within the city. Some of the key findings when it comes to specific plans and policies and ordinances, we did a review of all the standards and details as far as they relate to best management practices within the International Society of Aboriculture and make recommendations to update those. Some things that are doing well is that parks, I'm sorry, one thing that's desired to do well is that maintaining parking medium trees on a three- to four-year term cycle, but currently funding and staffing levels are a little bit too low to achieve that. And so one of the things that we noticed across the board is while some things are doing well to achieve the larger goals and meeting the best management practices recommended within the UFMP, there will be a need for some additional funding. Like I mentioned, there was an extensive amount of community outreach included in this project. We attended five different community events. We did a lot of outreach on social media, spoke with, did individual meetings with local nonprofit and community-based organizations. We had over 700 responses to our survey, our website. We had a virtual community meeting to get feedback on the project. There's been presentations that commissions. Our working group meetings were really important, where we had four meetings that were an hour and hour, hour and a half long, where we worked on the vision, guiding principles, goals to really narrow down Temecula-specific needs. We held a two-hour listening session with residents and community stakeholders. We had 36 attendees. And lastly, we made educational brochures, which are directed towards three different audiences of your single-family homeowners, landscape managers, so people that are not physically doing tree work, and then your commercial and retail property owners, to give them direct information about the role that they play in tree management and what they can do to help improve their urban forest canopy and health. Some of those key findings from the engagement, people like their trees in Temecula, which is fantastic. But there is some confusion about who manages trees, especially when it comes to the right-of-way. Some right-of-ways are in a front yard, and there's a tree there. Is that a city tree or a resident property owner-managed tree? So there are some issues on that. Needing to do some more education on proper tree management. Like we said, 90% of your trees are on those properties, so we need to make sure that those stakeholders know the value of trees and are able to implement practices to maintain tree health. And then finally, that community members did through that survey state, or it showed that they were in favor of protecting trees more strictly through an ordinance process. And that picture was from our Earth Day event last year, which was fantastic, where we got to plant over 300 trees with foreigner volunteers. The vision statement for the document that we worked with, with the community members and the working group and staff, "Temecula will preserve and expand a sustainable urban forest that embraces our shared history and enhances the quality of life by improving the health, safety, connectivity, economy, and resilience of our community." And so this was something, like I said, that was through that engagement process that the stakeholders and city staff felt reflected the values and priorities of Temecula. Within that, within our strategic plan after the vision statement, we broke that down into guiding principles, which are broader topics within that vision statement that we're trying to address through different strategies of the plan. And as you can, as you read through them, I'm not going to go through all this line by line, but we did our best to make sure that our guiding principles aligned with the Quality of Life Master Plan. So you'll see a lot of similarities in the phrasing and the topics that are selected there. And we felt that was very important to make sure that those two documents are aligned, so there's one vision for the community moving forward. Implementation is key. Having a plan is great, but putting it in practice is the hard part. So this plan is meant to achieve a vision over 30 to 40 years with actions that are going to be implemented over three, five, 10-year timeframes, with staff identified for who is responsible, costs associated with those actions, and then additional updates to the city ordinances needed to achieve BMPs. And then finally, some of the just next steps that need to happen. One, begin to look at additional funding mechanisms to support UFMP implementation. And Inflation Reduction Act funding is now available for urban forestry. California received $43 million in state funds, and there's an additional grant funding cycle through the federal program of $100,000 to up to $50 million for increasing urban forestry activity. So those are some possibilities. Again, public engagement, 90% of your trees are on private property, so we got to make sure stakeholders, community members, everyone is on board with protecting and growing the health, healthy canopy and urban forest. And then finally, looking at the ordinance, updating that, and having that officially codified. And with that, thank you very much for letting us present and talk to you about trees tonight.
Wonderful. Any questions? No questions tonight, but thank you. I think it's, we don't know what we don't know, so this document's going to be very helpful for our community going forward. I would have never guessed the percentages of tree canopy, so now we know. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Okay, we'll move on to our board and commission reports. This evening, we have Chair Steed with the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Schwank, city council members. The Ready Commission is made up of seven residents who serve together as an advisory group to the city council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within the city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations. Our last meeting was on April 13th, and the highlights of the meeting are as follows. The Ready Commission presented a proclamation for Arab American History Month, and the presentation included the following. We received a video regarding Arab American Heritage Month. It was a very, very educational. I understand all the council members were out of town, but we did get a video from Mayor Schwank, so we appreciate that. It really encouraged students and the community. We also read and presented the proclamation, and we had comments from SWANA, which is Southwest Asian and North African Club of MSJC. We did a presentation by Commissioner Deutsch related to census data and historical information. Again, very, very educational, and I encourage people to definitely look into that information or re-watch the tape. We also got a presentation by Community Services regarding Arab American History Month events during the month in the city, which were really, really great and a great way to be inclusive. The commissioner also received an update from the Community Services on the Second Annual Culture Fest, which will be happening on May 20th, and it's going to be from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Again, we've had a ton of people wanting to have vendor booths and participate in that event, so we're really excited about it happening again. And lastly, our next commission is actually going to be on a Monday in May. It's going to be on May 15th, and everyone is invited to attend, and we're going to be celebrating AANHPI, Asian American Island or Pacific, and Jewish Heritage Month. So if anybody would like to attend, we'd love to have you there. And that is it for our commission. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Chair Steed. Okay, we'll move on to our public safety report. Chief Crater, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff, and City of Temecula residents. For the month of March, the fire department here in Temecula within the city limits ran 903 emergencies. Nine of those were fires, 72 were traffic collisions, and 669 were medical-related calls. Next slide, please. Here you can see the station trends, our downtown station, Station 12, 198 calls in the middle of the city, Station 84, 205, and then on the outskirts in the new community, 56 calls for Station 95. We also attended the Wolf Creek HOA Safety Fair. About 300 folks showed up for that with their kids and families and really had a good day, enjoying our emergency manager speaking about being prepared and having a safe city to CHP, to RSO, and the Boys and Girls Club actually participated. I'd like to thank Denise Wilson from the Ready Commission for attending and speaking, also Mayor Schwank, and Councilmember Brown. It was a good event, and we appreciated the opportunity to come out and meet the community and be with you. Next slide. As far as prevention, in March, we did 699 plan check and reviews. That's a ton, and it continues to pick up. Our folks are busy. You could see year-to-date, 1,597 have been completed. Construction inspections, 403. You could see the year-to-date total there. Special events, one. Annual inspections, which are state-mandated inspections here in the city, that the Annual inspections, which are state mandated inspections here in the city that the state mandates we do for multifamily schools and hotels, 671, and we're on track to be completed about a month ahead of schedule on that. And then 29 residents came into City Hall to do plan checks, construction inspections, apply for special events. Next slide. On the emergency management front, our emergency manager's been busy. It's a fairly new emergency management office here in the city, about two years running, but we've made significant strides in our policies and procedures and, and how we prepare the City of Temecula to withstand a natural disaster or man-made event. Emergency manager attended the California Emergency Services Association Program, and basically, this was a targeted training with the Joint Regional Intelligence Center and the FBI to discuss the Monterey Park incident that happened and kind of get some lessons learned about how emergency management responded to that incident, so we could bring that back. Anytime we have tragedies, we always want to learn from them what went right and what went wrong, so we could prepare for the future. He also attended and is updating our, he also is updating our fire hazard severity zone mapping. That has to do with the state of California and what severity zone we live in here in the city. We're able to have some dialogue with the stakeholders and actually give them what the lay of the land is here in the City of Temecula. Things have changed, and it's not rural anymore. So some of these maps are being updated throughout Riverside County, and we've had multiple meetings on this. And when, when we have this dialogue, it also allows us to deal with the insurance companies, to let them know what the fire hazard severity zone here is in the city limits. COVID emergency response, that is with FEMA right now, our package. And then from the Fairview Fire, we did open a couple of shelters in the city, and that is what Cal OES right now looking for approval. Also, training and preparedness and events, we do have community preparedness backpacks. We have handed out 322 of those. Basically, these are backpacks with supplies for 24 hours. Gives you some bleeding control, things of that nature, how to filtrate water, and it just gives our community the opportunity to have something in their home to keep them safe or to help their neighbor in an emergency. So go on the website under emergency management, and those are available. And right now, there's no major emergencies in the city, so we're at normal operation in our emergency management department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Crater. Any questions? All right. Appreciate the report. We'll move on to our public comment for non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we do have several public comments, so we will go ahead and take up to 30 minutes of non-agendized public comment. The first speaker, speakers are limited to three minutes, and the first speaker is Denise Wilson, to be followed by Slim.
Welcome.
Thank you. Perfect. So, good evening, Mayor, City Council members, our staff, and our guests. We are here this evening, Rock Your Red for Heart and Stroke Awareness. We are 501(c)(3) in the City of Temecula, and our mission is to educate and bring awareness of stroke and heart disease. And we have partnered up with Temecula Valley Hospital, and we're so excited about this because our whole mission is to educate and save lives and reduce the, the number of cardiovascular disease in our community. So we are holding a free, and yes, I did say free, CPR hands-only training and Stop the Bleed training at Temecula Valley Hospital, and this is on Saturday, May the 13th, from 9:00 to 11:30. But we need everyone to register. It's free, but we need to have enough lunches for everyone. So you need to go to our website at rockyourred.org to register. Again, this is a CPR hands-only class and Stop the Bleed. And then we will also be doing a Surviving Your Emergency with our Katie Bacher, who was the chief cardiologist, not the chief cardiologist, she's the stroke manager at Temecula Valley Hospital. So we would like to invite you all to come out and to support. And I have my Rock Your Red committee here, and I just want to thank them also for being here this evening. Again, hands-only CPR, Rock Your Red for Heart and Stroke Awareness, and let's educate our community on heart and stroke disease and reduce the number-one killer and the number-one, the number-three killer in all Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Slim, to be followed by Jeff Whitick.
Welcome.
Welcome. Dr. Phil Donahue Show, April 19, 2023, with Bob Woodson, 86-year-old Negro civil rights activist. Dr. Phil asked Bob Woodson, "You say you don't support reparations. Why not?" Bob, quote, "Not everybody suffered equally. I mean, when you go into slavery, it's much more complex than the white people were the oppressors and black people were the victims. If you dissect it, you will find that there were about 3,700 free blacks who owned 12,000 slaves, black slaves. The question is, do the descendants of those free blacks who owned slaves, do they pay? Blacks really benefited more the first 100 years after slavery than we have in the last 50 years. I was born in 1937 during the Depression. Everyone in my small, low-income black community, 98% of the household, had a man and a woman raising children. Elderly people could walk safely in that community without fear of being assaulted by their grandchildren. You never heard of gunfire during that time, never heard of a child being shot to death in the crib, but there are 50 children today who have been shot and killed in our cities. You talk about remedies. We got to look beyond saying that every solution has to have a winner and a loser, that blacks can only benefit if whites lose. We have to be defined more than just victims of oppression. When whites were at their worst, blacks were at their best. When we were denied access to hotels, we built our own. We have to communicate to our people that the history of how they achieved in the face of oppression. But if we continue to sit back and say all of the challenges that we face out of, out of wedlock births or violence, that someone that control of that is in the hands of white America, and therefore, until white people change, there's nothing we can do. This sets up a terrible situation for this nation. The big crisis facing America is not racial. It is a moral and spiritual freefall that is consuming our children. The highest death rate among black families is homicide. And so, if we are to address this crisis that is causing our children to lack a sense of personal responsibility or value for their own life, they will take their own lives or take someone else. So in order to address that, we must come together and look beyond race and realize America's drowning because it's in a moral and spiritual freefall." Close quote. Important fact, CRT fails to mention, over 99% of the 4 million Negro slaves were owned by the Democrat Party white Americans, not white Republicans, and Democrat Party policies are still destroying black families today. This is for the Temecula City Council and all concerned citizens. Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeff Whitick, to be followed by Laurel Lamont.
Welcome.
Thank you. So as I'm sure council is aware, the city's making a $1.5 million investment this year in mental health services. The majority of that investment is going toward Temecula Valley Hospital for the expansion and construction of a behavioral health services facility. This investment, as you can see here, is in concert with the Temecula Valley, I'm sorry, the Temecula Quality of Life Master Plan, which specifically calls out for the expansion of Temecula Valley Hospital, including its behavioral health facility. Our city manager has spoken to a number of papers mentioning that the health, safety, and general welfare of the community will be improved by the investment. The hospital intends to use their investment to provide services to at-risk veterans, active-duty military, first responders, youth, homeless individuals, all of which reside in the City of Temecula. What was surprising to me is that one of our city council members, Councilmember Calphus, posted and spoke out against the expansion of Temecula Valley Hospital, and in doing so, against the Quality of Life Master Plan. The first page of the posting highlights a pay dispute, which is taking place between the hospital and its workers. The second page of the posting factually details the hospital's expansion plans, which include the build-out of existing facilities, the expansion of the emergency services department, and the construction of the behavioral health facility. Unfortunately, the next several pages are not nearly as factual. The council member uses baseless allegations and inflammatory language in an apparent attempt to create fear and opposition to the construction of the behavioral health facility. There are quotes like, "We would be the only city in the area with a mental health hospital," which would mean that individuals going through psychiatric and psychological, psychological issues would be brought from all over the county to Temecula. He then asks, "Is there a plan to help these people, these individuals, back to their homes in other cities, once they're released into the community?" Effectively implying that they will be...
Your time is up.
...left in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitick. The next speaker is Laurel Lamont.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm just here to, you know, continue venting about housing, and I'd like to know what we're doing outside of the last, you know, thing we put up there on the board, which didn't really highlight anything new or any new ideas. Are we going over the housing element and things we put in there? Are we seeking funding from outside so that we can have the money for it? Are we creating equitable inclusion as far as housing is concerned? The service workers and the service industry and the local lower economic workforce is more than just your servants. We're people, and I know you just want to hear from people who live here, so I keep showing up, and maybe you think I'm just going to give this all up and I'm going to get tired of doing it. I'm a unique bird, and I keep showing up. So I would like to know when we're going to add that to agenda, or pass it to the Ready Commission, or all of the above. We have ideas. Let's start working on them, and beyond working on them, let's start talking about them. Let's acknowledge what we haven't done so that we can get to what we can do. Let's start talking about things that haven't been done that are being piloted elsewhere. Let's start talking about solutions to housing and acknowledging the constituents that can afford to live within the communities they serve. So I'll vent today. I'll probably vent next Tuesday.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Shereen Harding, to be followed by Bob Cowell.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shereen Harding, and I'm a neonatal ICU nurse and CEO and founder of Keneys House, Inc., a nonprofit 501(c)(3) animal rescue located here in Temecula. Our mission is to provide a safe and healthy environment for abandoned neglected animals to thrive and find a second chance at life until the responsible and loving homes can be found. California carries the second highest euthanasia rate in the United States, killing over 100,000 cats and dogs per year. Most of these animals are under the age of five and are healthy adoptable. And are healthy and adoptable. As of April 2023, Riverside County shelters have killed over 865 dogs and cats. Many of these animals are killed with little to no notice to the public and rescues, giving them little to no chance of making it out alive. Due to this inconsistency of notice with the shelters, Bowie's Law is being brought into legislation. Bowie was a puppy at the Downey Shelter that was accidentally euthanized, even after he had a commitment from a rescue to pull him. Bowie's Law is an AB 595, which would require that all animal shelters give public notice to the rescues as well as the public via their website at least 72 hours before euthanizing any dog, cat, or rabbit. Last week, this law was passed unanimously at the California Assembly Business and Professions Committee, despite much opposition from many of the shelters and organizations such as the ASPCA. This is just a small win in the animal rescue world. I and many other rescues are overwhelmed by the numbers of homeless animals in our communities. We can't keep up, nor do we have the funding, space, volunteers, networking capabilities, or reliable fosters needed to save all these beautiful souls. Just asking with their big eyes, "Please choose me. I deserve a second chance." So since I launched Keneys House in June of 2022, we have rescued 11 dogs from the local shelters, Moreno Valley, Riverside County shelters, Harupa and Coachella campuses. Most of these dogs are already cleared for euthanasia or only have hours before they're euthanized. We have rehomed five. Five are in an in-home foster situation, and unfortunately, we did lose one during emergency surgery at the shelter. We not only provide all our residents with love and care, but they're spayed, neutered, microchipped, vetted, and receive some training prior to being adopted. Keneys House residents are residents for a lifetime. Adoption Day is not the end, it's just the beginning of their new chapter. So I ask you guys tonight, if you have the space in your heart, your home, to foster, please come see me at the end of this meeting. And if you cannot foster and would like to help with a monetary donation, your time, or supplies, food, beds, leashes, toys, you name it, they need it. It would be greatly appreciated. And I'd like, this is my nephew, he is my number-one rescue ranger and supporter of Keneys House.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Mick Sobzak.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome. Actually, I was directed to you, Zach. About a month ago, I, I was speaking, and a few of us were speaking, we were outside the city, and you said you were frustrated by us being here. So I'd like to point out that, that fact, that you said that. And I'll just read a statement that I have here. You said the meeting would be over by now if we didn't have public comments from the outside. I'm, well, you now have limited public speaking to a total of 30 minutes, and now don't read comments from those who cannot attend, maybe they're work or are disabled. It appears that your time is more important than those of the constituents and neighbors. You've also condensed important decisions to the consent calendar without public discussion. You have turned yourself into a river stand for the state programs. We who live outside of Temecula city limits may have interests within Temecula. As, as neighbors, we are stakeholders. There's also something called free speech. We can go to any city council in the state or the country and talk, any public place. I am president of the Marietta Temecula Republican Assembly, meaning I have constituents or people that I represent that live in Temecula. Our club mailbox is in the city. We have many people that live here. The wine industry is a stakeholder, very tied to Temecula's with the infrastructure between Temecula and wine country, which is not within the city limits. We both benefit. People from neighboring cities are stakeholders here. They shop here, and they pay sales taxes here. If you drive through Temecula, you're a stakeholder via the roads or even the freeway. Why don't you require the staff to be from the Temecula since they make the decisions or carry out the ordinances? Some members of the community Temecula Unity don't live in Temecula either, but speak here all the time. Zach, you said, paraphrased, "The city has been under duress for the last three years." You know how long Temecula Unity has been in place? Excuse me, three years. It's been here for three years. Temecula Unity started three years ago. Since COVID mandates and shutdowns, people have gotten to see how bad a government can get without civic oversight. Thank you.
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Mick Sobzak, to be followed by Ron Larson.
Welcome.
How you doing? So, two weeks ago, I was in here asking a question about Chauncey Killings, who's sitting right there, who had used motor oil thrown on him by a Temecula Valley High School student. And all I asked was a simple question of whether or not the city was gonna charge the family for cleanup on that. And at the end of the meeting, Councilwoman Alexandra asked you a question, told you, "I was sitting here waiting for an answer." You said something to her that was inaudible to the audience, rapped your gavel, and adjourned the meeting. The following Friday, I did get a phone call from Public Works saying that the sidewalk was cleaned up, and I rolled by there today, and I looked at it. But I just think that since you like to play games, and I joined the Marine Corps in 1982, boot camp taught me how to play games. During my career, I was a machine gun instructor, I was a combat engineer instructor twice. I finally retired in 2017 at a Camp Pendleton. I have learned to play more games than Milton Bradley, and now you're a participant. I have in my hands a California Public Request Act records for all transcripts, emails, text messages regarding Chauncey Killings, as well as for the incident on Easter Sunday when Jen Reeves of Temecula Unity claimed that her house and car were vandalized by members of 412 Church and Pastor Tim Thompson. So, I want to know who do I hand these to? Because I have a copy for each council member, city attorney, and the city manager. So, I'd like to approach the deal and give them, well, give them to Ms. Joel Olson. So, and I'll see you in 10 days. Thank you.
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Ron Larson.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Swank, City Council, and staff. I understand that as an open meeting, people from surrounding communities are permitted to participate in our council sessions. As a resident and taxpayer, I find this a real travesty. Speakers who come to our town to voice their opinions would be better served if they would spend their time and energy fixing problems in their own community. I thank you all for whatever you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, that's all the speakers on non-agendized items.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go and move to council reports. Do any of my council colleagues like to start with a report?
I'll start.
Councilmember Brown?
I think I have a slide.
Yeah, look it up.
All right. So, this morning, myself and my council member, Jessica Alexander, got to attend the Santa Margarita Ecological Reserve Research One Solar Project, which is 16 acres of solar that the city of Temecula gets to benefit, as well as the city of Lake Elsinore. I'd like to thank former council member, former mayor, Matt Ron, for giving an overview from the project, which started when he was here. The mayor pro tem from Lake Elsinore, as well as a council member, Southern California Edison, and then also like to thank the city staff for coordinating the logistics to the event. But for specifics regarding the benefit to the city, I'll pass it over to Public Works Director Pat Thompson.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Alexander, for attending the event this morning. Yes, as you mentioned, this facility is going to be a great benefit for the city of Temecula. You mentioned the size of the facility. It's 16 acres, includes about 10,000 solar panels. So, just as a frame of reference, so for a typical single-family home, the solar systems usually have about 15 panels. So, this is equivalent to about 600 single-family home solar systems. The facility will generate 6.4 million kilowatt-hours of electricity per year, and that'll be used by both the city of Temecula and the city of Lake Elsinore. The city of Temecula's share of that power is about 4.4 million kilowatt-hours, and our facilities use about 5.8 kilowatt-hours of electricity per year. So, this facility will generate about 75% of the electricity that's used at all of the city's facilities. We buy this electricity from the owner. The city is not the owner of the facility, but we have a power purchase agreement to purchase the electricity that's generated. So, we didn't have any upfront capital cost, and we're able to buy this electricity at about 15% less than what Southern California Edison sells electricity for. So, a great savings for the city to be able to purchase this power at a discount and reduce our electricity costs and usage. And then also, just from a sustainability standpoint, being that we're purchasing renewable power goes towards our climate action goals. And if you're ever asked why we're not installing solar panels on our city facilities, the answer to that question is we are, because this facility generates, like I said, about 75% of the electricity that we use at all of our facilities. So, we are heavily invested in solar generation. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any about that.
Yeah, thank you for that overview, and thank you for the presentation this morning at the event.
Yeah, wonderful. It's a great project. Okay, nothing else? All right, I have a few slides, so if we can go ahead and put up the first slide from Sacramento, please. So, last week, myself, Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, and Councilmember Alexander had an opportunity to travel to Sacramento for the League of California Cities, their City Leaders Summit. Both myself and Mayor Stewart are the appointed representatives for Cal City. So, we spent quite a lot of time meeting with our state reps, meeting with committee chairs and legislative staff. We did attend quite a few education sessions on housing, law enforcement, specifically law enforcement surrounding schools, which was very interesting. And then obviously, just being up there connecting with other council members and staff, and obviously, the most important part is connecting with the legislators in the state to let them know the needs that we have here in our city. So, that was a very good few days that we spent in Sacramento. I have a slide for an event we have next, or in two weeks, rather. So, this is a save the date, and we really wanted to let the community know that we are inviting you to the 30th Anniversary Memorial honoring Deputy Kent Hindergard. So, we want to make sure that our law enforcement brothers and sisters are in our thoughts and prayers, and when we have something like this that happens in our community, we want to make sure that we honor them in a way that is representative of us. So, we will be having this event here out in front of the Civic Center Quad, Tuesday, May 9, 2023, to honor Deputy Kent Hindergard, who was killed 30 years ago. I have a proclamation that was presented at the ready, so keeping with tradition, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation here at City Council from the last Ready Commission meeting. It was for the Arab American Heritage Month, and I did send in a video, like was stated by Chair Steed while we were in Sacramento. So, it says, "Whereas National Arab American Heritage Month celebrates the valuable contributions that Arab Americans make to every aspect of American society, and whereas the initiative for the official national designation of the month was launched in 2017 by the nonprofit Arab American Foundation and its sister organization, Arab America. And whereas the initiative began with support from a few states gaining momentum each year with President Joe Biden officially recognizing Arab American Heritage Month through a federal proclamation in April 2021, and whereas an estimated 3.7 million Americans have Arab roots, according to the Arab American Institute, with ancestries traced to 22 countries in the Middle East and North Africa, including Lebanon, Syria, Egypt, Palestine, Morocco, Iraq, Jordan, Yemen, Bahrain, Tunisia, Algeria, Sudan, Qatar, Saudi Arabia, the United Arab Emirates, and others. And whereas across the country, cultural institutions, school districts, municipalities, state legislators, public servants, and nonprofit organizations issue proclamations and engage in special events that celebrate our community's rich heritage and numerous contributions to society. And whereas the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped to build a better nation, and whereas Arab American residents contribute greatly to the economic viability and the high quality of life our community as professionals, business owners, educators, students, volunteers, veterans, and more. And whereas these contributions include those of the Arab American youth of the community, including those attending local high schools and colleges in Temecula. Now therefore, I, Mayor Zach Swank, on behalf of the City Council of City Temecula hereby proclaim this month of April 2023 to be National Arab American Heritage Month, and call upon the community to learn more about the heritage of Arab Americans and observe this month with appropriate programs and activities." So, I'm also looking forward to the Ready Commission's next month's proclamation. All right, and then finally, I just have a very quick video. I'll tee this off. We all know Lisa from Temecula, a Saturday Night Live skit that has sort of caught the world by storm. We were approached by NBC Los Angeles when they were going to interview Ego Wodham earlier this week, and rather than send a brief statement, we decided to make a video. We decided to lean into this and acknowledge Lisa from Temecula and appreciate everything that Ego and NBC and Saturday Night Live have done in this character development. Now, I think this video is interesting because it go into a little bit about the character development and why Temecula. So, go ahead and play the video.
Temecula is just down not too far. I go to Temecula all the time with the wine. It's so funny. Why did you pick Temecula? How did I come about?
The writers, which is so funny, because Alex English, who was the writer of the sketch, along with Gary Richardson and Michael Che, none of them have spent real time in California. I think Gary spent a little bit of time here, but I don't know. We were told to give it a more memorable name than it had at the time, which is birthday day. And that woman from Temecula, they decided she was from Temecula? I don't know how. I woke up on a Saturday, and I was like, okay, she's from Temecula now, and I was like, okay, great. I'm surprised you guys know what Temecula is. It's based on Alex English's cousin, apparently, who had dinner over the holiday, got a well-done steak, and was kind of shaking the table. I mean...
Well, check this out. We reached out to the mayor of Temecula. Zach Swank sent you a little message.
The city of Temecula is proud to claim Lisa from Temecula is one of our own. In fact, I'd like to cordially invite Lisa from Temecula to sit at the mayor's table with me for the 2023 Temecula State of the City.
They got great wineries.
I heard. I just know Temecula from living here. It's wine country, and so I'm like, I knew what it was as soon as I heard it, but I was like, I didn't know that the writers... That is unreal.
Let him hook you up.
You gotta do that and send us the video. I'm going.
Well, as you can see, obviously, Mario Lopez comes to Temecula quite a bit, and he's out in our wineries, and Temecula is a wonderful place, so we sure hope that Ego takes us up on that and joins us for the State of the City. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. Before we start going to consent, do we have any public comments for consent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do actually have a public comment for Consent Calendar item number, it's the Habitat, so I believe that's number six, from Tammy Marine and Lynn Kelly Leonard. So, if you would like to poll that one, we can go ahead and do that, and we do have a presentation that's ready as well.
Okay, let's go ahead and poll that. Should we take the consent first, and then we can come back to that?
Would be preferred, thank you.
Okay, let's do that. So, item number one is waive reading of title and text of ordinance and resolutions, including in the agenda. Item number two is approved action minutes of April 11, 2023. Item number three is approved list of demands. Item number four is adopt resolution confirming the decision of the Temecula Planning Commission to revoke the conditional use permit issued to the bank located at 28645 Old Town Front Street. Item number five is approved sponsorship and economic development funding agreement with Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival Association for Temecula Valley Balloon and Wine Festival. We're gonna poll six. Item seven is approve agreement for consultant services with Farr and Peers, Inc. for complete streets policy document. Item number eight is renew the abandoned vehicle abatement program with the County of Riverside. Item nine is adopt the 2023 City of Temecula Emergency Operations Plan. Item number 10 is approve purchase and installation agreements with PlayCor Wisconsin, Inc., DBA Game Time, and Landscape Structures, Inc. for playground equipment enhanced and safety servicing at Temecula Creek Trail Park, Red Hawk Park, Kaya Aragon Park, and Long Canyon Creek Park. Item number 11 is approve Second Amendment to Agreement with CASC for Engineering and Consulting for NPDES Commercial and Industrial Inspections. Item 12 is approve accept improvements and file notice of completion for the citywide Slurry Seal Program fiscal year 2021-22, PW 2202. Item number 13 is accept improvements and file notice of completion for sidewalks, DLR Drive Project, PW 19-18. 14, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the Community Recreation Center Splash Pad and Shade Structure Project, PW 21-07. 15 is adopt resolution finding that an emergency condition continues to exist within the meaning of Public Contract Code Sections 20168 and 22050. And 16 is receive and file temporary street closures for the Kent Hindergard 30th Anniversary Memorial. I'll entertain a motion and a second. A motion?
Second.
Yes, we have a motion by Councilmember Calphus and a second by Councilwoman Alexander. Let us vote. And just like that, the room's like nearly empty. All the students left, for those of you that can't see in the audience, and that passes 4-0 with Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Stewart absent. Okay, let's go back to item number six is approve agreement for the Temecula Home Repair Program with Habitat for Humanity. May we have staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We'll do a brief presentation on the Habitat for Humanity program. So, this program is coming out of the original COVID pandemic Community Reinvestment Program, or CRP funding, that the City Council approved on March 8, 2022. It's about a half million dollars. This program is following a formula that we've used in the past for CDBG. It also addresses some of our housing element programs to reinvest in our existing housing stock as well. And of course, with any of our programs that have income limits on them, income verification is required. So, what are some of these repairs that the home repair program may include? Well, could be roofing replacements, heating and cooling, wheelchair lifts, water heaters, and other life safety systems like carbon monoxide alarms, smoke detectors, et cetera. Here are some example photos of some past projects that Habitat actually worked on, and thank you for providing the photos, Habitat, as well. Again, roofs being replaced and helping our lower-income residents maintain their existing housing. So, windows and some facades being replaced and maintained. And so, we've had this Habitat partnership for several years. It's a great partnership. We kind of changed our funding source this year to really lean in on this with this half million dollars. We normally fund this out of CDBG, but we've really grown the program to make a difference in more homes over the next few years. And they're very familiar with our requirements. They've done an excellent job with documentation and income verification. So, again, we have a great experience with them. Staff in Habitat is available for questions on this project.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions of staff at this moment? Okay, thanks. We'll go ahead and call the first speaker for this item.
Yes, we actually have Tammy Marine and Lynn Kelly Leonard on the same speaker card, so I'll invite both of them up.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here. I'm Tammy Marine. I'm the CEO of Habitat Humanity in Lynn Valley, and I'm here tonight to talk about this program that Brandon just referred to that's under consideration in tonight's agenda. And I also want to introduce, I'm very proud to introduce someone, or reintroduce, because most of you already know her, our Director of Housing Programs and Compliance, Lynn Kelly Leonard. And so, she's gonna talk a little bit about the program, and then I have a couple closing comments.
Thank you, Tammy. It's been a while since I've been here. Hello, councilmembers and former colleagues and friends. It's nice to see you all. As Tammy said, I am new to Habitat. I am the Director of Housing Programs and Compliance, and I just want to tell you a little bit about the Home Repair Program. The Home Repair Program will provide critical grants for home...
It's been a while since I've been here. Hello, councilmembers and former colleagues and friends. It's nice to see you all. As Tammy said, I am new to Habitat. I am the Director of Housing Programs and Compliance, and I just want to tell you a little bit about the home repair program. The home repair program will provide critical grants for home repair projects pertaining to mostly health and safety issues to benefit Temecula homeowners under eighty percent of the area median income. We run a multitude of home preservation programs, and we have since 2006. And in fact, Habitat for Humanity in Lynn Valley is one of the highest performing affiliates in the entire country due to the partnerships like this one with the City of Temecula. Our joint efforts allow us to serve underserved populations and provide necessary support to some of our most vulnerable residents. The allocation of funds under consideration tonight will help us ramp up the program, broaden the scope of work, and increase the number of families we serve. About ninety percent of the homeowners we have have already served are senior citizens, and we anticipate that trend to carry over into the future funds as well.
Okay, so in the quest to seek affordable housing solutions, it's critical that we also maintain and preserve our existing housing stock. The program is a needed complement to other initiatives being implemented and supports our overarching housing strategy. I want to give special thanks to Luke Watson and also to Brandon Rubido. This idea was initiated in part by them and our conversations behind the scenes about housing and housing repair. We have a lot of people on our waiting list right now, so I think we can really make good use of the money and really help a lot of people. In the months to come, you will be seeing me a couple times because we've had a lot of conversations behind the scenes, and Habitat has some new projects and initiatives underway, and I'll be excited to share those at a later time. But we are just so grateful and appreciative for our partnership with the city and all the staff and council, and we just thank you so much in allowing us an opportunity, if approved, so we can move forward and serve more families.
Great, wonderful. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Brown and a second by Councilmember Alexander. Let us vote. All right, and that passes 4-0. Wonderful. We'll be helping more and more families stay in their homes and live in a more beautiful home in the future. I'll go ahead and adjourn our Temecula City Council meeting and pass it on over to Temecula Community Services District for that meeting.
All right, I call to order a Temecula Community Services District meeting. Madam Clerk, note that we are all here except for Director Stu. On the consent calendar, we only have one item, item number seventeen for approval for action minutes on April 11th, 2023. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Go ahead and vote.
Okay, I have the motion by Curtis, Councilmember Curtis Brown. Who was the second? I'm sorry.
I was. I'm sorry, I wasn't loud enough.
And for the record, there were no public comments. And that passes.
All right, 4 to 0. Great job. Director of Community Services, report. Do you have anything?
Yes, I have a couple of slides I'd like to share with the community. First, we'd like to tell everybody about our Community Services Expo. So this is an older event we did for many years, and in our old version of this event, you could register in person. So it was very popular for people to come early and get their registrations in for the programs that tended to fill up. Then with the advent of online registration and everybody having a mobile device, they could just register themselves at any time, the need for that kind of went away. But we decided this year, post-COVID, we'd like to bring the event back, not for the registration, but so that we can have all of our contract class instructors there. So anybody who's interested in any of those programs you see in our wonderful brochure that just came out in the mail can come, meet the instructors, see demonstrations, kids can participate in activities. It's just going to be a lot of fun for the entire family. So it will be right out here on Saturday, April 29th, in our Civic Center Quad, right in front of City Hall, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Next slide. And then, of course, the following weekend, you can't miss Temecula Rod Run, Southern California's premier car show. We will kick off with our cruise night on Friday, May 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we'll have our show and shine on Saturday, May 6th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Be sure to check out the vendors on Main Street, and don't forget to purchase your official Temecula Rod Run gear. And then one final note, not on the slide, I just wanted to remind everyone that May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. So we just like to do our part in community services to promote community resilience and mental wellness for all of our residents in a multitude of ways, whether it's through our programming or our supportive services. We really take pride in and consider it a privilege to have this ability to promote mental health and well-being in our community. So, thank you all. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. General Manager Report, anything?
Nothing tonight, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. Board of Directors Reports, anything?
Nothing.
All right, that's a quick one. All right, I adjourn, and back to Mayor Schrank.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order the Temecula Public Financing Authority Meeting. Madam City Clerk, please note that we are all still here with the noted absence from Mayor Pro-Tim Stewart. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public comments for this joint meeting of TPFA and City Council.
Okay, wonderful. We'll move on to our consent calendar. We have two items on consent. Item eighteen is approve action minutes of April 11th, 2023, and item nineteen is approve deposit agreement and initiate community facilities district formation proceedings related to the all-terre development. I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Alexander, a second by Calphus. Councilmember Calphus. Okay, and that passes 4-0 with the noted absence. Go ahead and move to Executive Director's Report. Anything?
Nothing further tonight.
Thank you. Board of Directors, anything? Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and we're going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, move to the public hearing. We have one item. Item twenty is approve fiscal year 2023, 2024 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. Go ahead and pass it over to our Assistant City, our Deputy City Manager, Luke Watson.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Frank. He's here. He's our CDBG consultant. He's going to lead us through the presentation tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you, Luke. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Frank Perez with MDG Associates and working with City of Temecula staff as their CDBG program administrator. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2023-24 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. First, I do want to provide a very brief background about the CDBG program. CDBG program is a federally funded program that strives to create the development of viable urban communities through a couple of actions, promoting, preserving, and assisting the development of affordable housing, improving and expanding public infrastructure and facilities, and providing and improving access to public services. CDBG activities that are identified in the annual action plan must meet one of three national objectives that are listed on your screen. Funding from the City of Temecula is typically allocated towards the first objective, which fall under activities that benefit low and moderate income persons. It should be noted that in 2012, the City of Temecula City Council adopted its first consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan, and became an entitlement city under HUD, which authorized Temecula to receive CDBG funds from the federal government. Like I mentioned, Temecula's program is guided by two main types of documents, first being the consolidated plan, that five-year plan, and then it's carried out through yearly annual action plans, which we'll be discussing a little bit more in detail in the next few slides. The consolidated plan, like I mentioned, five-year plan, that is used as a general framework for the city to assess its housing and community development needs, and also identify its priority projects and its funding allocations. It also includes a market analysis, needs assessment, and strategic plan and assessment on fair housing. The city is now in its third consolidated cycle, consolidated plan cycle, as an entitlement grantee that will provide the vision and how to spend its CDBG funds over now, starting as 2022, all the way through 2026. Each program, or the programs that are funded through CDBG, must meet, like I mentioned, a national objective through the consolidated plan, and also meet one of its priority needs that are identified that were approved in 2022. The consolidated plan has six priorities. Those priorities are intended to be brought in order to remain flexible over the life of the consolidated plan and allows, as the needs change, as the needs may change for the city over that five-year cycle. Each funded program must meet, again, like I mentioned, one of the priorities listed on your screen, which include improved neighborhoods, public facilities and infrastructure. They're also promote development of affordable housing, preserve the existing housing stock, provide public services for low and moderate income residents, provide public services for residents with special needs, including seniors and veterans, and then also provide services for homeless and those at risk of homelessness. Next, I'll focus on the specific annual action plan for 2023, 2024. While the consolidated plan provides that overarching framework for the CDBG program, like we mentioned, such as activities, the action plan defines specific projects on an annual basis for each program year and how the city intends to utilize its allotted federal funds and address those national objectives and the priority needs of the consolidated plan through individual activities. HUD does require, as with many other plans that the city does conduct, extensive community outreach prior to the adoption of any annual action plan. During the application period, that did start in November of 2022, with a notice of funding availability, staff held two technical workshops in the month of December to provide technical assistance about the CDBG program, to also assist the applicants with the application process and any questions they may have. Staff also met with finance subcommittee consisting of Mayor Pro-Tim James Stewart and Councilmember Brendan Calphus for funding recommendations, which are reflected in the draft annual action plan. So thank you for your time and your efforts on those matters as well. The city also had a 30-day public review period, and tonight we have the public hearing with City Council. The city's allocation of CDBG funds, its allocation expected to receive is $594,271 in CDBG funds for 2023, 2024, which will start and go into effect July 1st of this year. It's an increase from last year of slightly about $45,000, so it's always great to know that the city actually did receive additional funds versus it going down, which had been a trend in the past previous years. The allocation is also broken up into three major areas. The city can spend up to a maximum 20% of the allocation, approximately $118,000, on administrative costs, which includes any consultant's time, staff time, that it takes to actually administer the overall program implementation. A maximum mandated of 15% or $89,140 may be allocated towards public service-type activities, and then the remainder of $413,000 can be allocated towards capital improvement What you see on your screen here are the public service recommendations, public service providers. The city did receive 11 public service funding applications. One application, though, however, was deemed ineligible based off of not being able to fit under the identified consolidated plan priority needs. It should be noted that we did partner out with that service provider, let them know of the city's outreach efforts and the upcoming consolidated plan cycle, so they'll be a partner and stakeholder as well in future plan needs. As I mentioned, of the yearly allocation, 15% may be allocated towards public services, what you see here on $89,000. The CDBG funds were spent entirely, are spent entirely on low and moderate income Temecula residents. This slide demonstrates the finance subcommittee's recommendations for 23-24 funding towards the City Council for your consideration this evening. With administration and public service categories kind of out of the way there, the remainder of the CDBG allocation, approximately $413,000, like I mentioned, can be used towards the implement, capital improvement projects, and ADA being the focus of that. Projects under the CIP category fall under the priority need under the consolidated plan of improving neighborhoods, public facilities, and infrastructure, just as the framework for that type of activity. This evening, staff recommends that City Council approve a resolution for the 23-24 Annual Action Plan as an action, as an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, for funding under the federal Community Development Block Grant. This does conclude my presentation. Community development staff and myself are here available if you have any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of staff or the consultant? No? Okay, any comments before we entertain a motion? All right, no comments. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing. We would respectfully ask that you open the public hearing. I do have one public comment, after which you can close the public hearing.
Well, I will respectfully open the public hearing, and please call the first speaker.
And we have, our one and only speaker is Kathy Shaner. Kathy, you have five minutes under public comments.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City members and staff, and all of our guests here today. My name is Kathy Shaner, and I am the Community Outreach Coordinator for Voices for Children. We are so grateful for the council to consider and recommend us for the Community Development Block Grant. Voices for Children is the local nonprofit organization that oversees the court-appointed special advocate, or CASA, program. And a CASA is a community member that volunteers their time and is matched with the youth that's experiencing foster care, and they are able to get to know them, take them out on fun outings, and really advocate for their safety, their well-being, and also advocate for their education as well, which then will advance to preventing homelessness. I'd like to leave you with a quick story about one of the impacts our local CASAs made. Sixteen-year-old Alisa was matched with CASA Joanna in late 2020, and when Joanna met with Alisa, she let her know that her dream right now is to graduate from high school and attend college. Unfortunately, in 2020, Alisa was struggling with her education. She was falling behind, and she was not on track to graduate from high school. CASA Joanna quickly stepped in and met with her teachers weekly, and also made sure that she attended all school events and advocated for her to have additional tutoring. And with the hard work of Alisa, and also from CASA Joanna, she is on track to graduate this June with her friends and her peers, and also to go on to college. So I just wanted to thank you so much for all of your support and being able to support our local youth that are experiencing foster care and that kind of fall through the tracks. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, are there any more speakers? Okay, I will respectfully close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve item number 20.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Respectfully vote. Okay, and that passes 4-0. Great work on the subcommittee, too. It's good stuff. Okay, departmental reports to receive and file items for future agenda. Do my council colleagues have anything for future agenda? Okay, hearing, seeing nothing, we'll move to our City Managers' Report. Mr. City Manager.
Respectfully, nothing further this evening, sir.
Mr. City Attorney.
I have nothing tonight.
Respectfully, or just nothing?
It's an open question.
All right, fair enough, fair enough. If we could please put up the slide on the screen for adjournment tonight, so we're going to adjourn tonight in memory of Councilmember Carly Meyer of the City of Hemet, who recently passed away, and Deputy Andrew Davidson of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, who just passed just a couple days ago. So we'll just give a brief moment of silence and close our meeting in memory of these two wonderful public servants. And we're adjourned.